I'd like to open this public hearing. This is for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant application. And just briefly on this application, give you some background. Notice was advertised in the Kingston Daily-Freeman. And we are, the purpose is to discuss the intended use of the community development block grant funds. This is Monday, September 14, 2015. I'm Brad Kabolte, Deputy Mayor. The Mayor is out of town and will be returning this week. So just some quick background here. The Village of Red Hook is over the low mod income threshold. And therefore, we can only apply or pursue handicap accessible or ADA compliant projects. And the maximum requested amount that we could apply for is $100,000. Of that amount, 20% will go toward engineering and administration, or $20,000. That gives us a remainder of about 80% of that cost, or $80,000 max. We did have a couple of projects that we were looking at, which I'll go briefly in detail. And then we'd also like to get some public input, if there is any unintended projects that we could pursue. The two that we're looking at specifically right now are signal crosswalks. And as you know, a couple of years back, we got a Federal Highway Administration grant to install three ADA compliant mid-block crosswalks on South Broadway, one on Prince Street, Fraley Street, and Morgan's Way. And we've noticed since these crosswalks have been installed that cars have a difficult time seeing pedestrians trying to cross the crosswalk and therefore not really stopping to allow them to cross. So we thought that one idea would be to look at a signal crossing device where you would push a button, a small LED solar-powered light would go on notifying the drivers that there are pedestrians wanting to cross, and the light would go off by the time they got to the other side. So that's one idea, and Jay will go more detail on that. The second one is that we do have, I would think, the majority of our handicap rams on our sidewalks at our intersections are not completely ADA compliant. What's missing there are these warning detection tiles. They're pimpled, as you may notice, in front of the crosswalks we have in front of the village building. And that's to notify that when you do hit those, you know, there's a textured pattern in the tile that's been set into the concrete that would make people who are blind or with some other disability aware that this is the beginning and the end of the crosswalk. So those are the two that we have now that we're continuing looking at. And I'll open it up to the floor for anybody in the public to comment or make a suggestion for us to consider. While you're all thinking about that, I'll let Jay kind of briefly describe the signal crosswalks.
Well, you hit most of the high spots on it. Basically, what I was looking for is I picked essentially four locations. That'd be three on Route 9 and one just around the corner toward the middle school. They're solar-powered, they have batteries, so that they're accepted by all of the DOTs. It's not a problem with their local guys allowing them. It seems to me, when I'm trying to cross the road out there, it seems like people speed up when, you know, you're approaching the intersection, and it's very, very difficult for people to actually see you. I mean, there are a lot of cars parked out there. The advantage of the signs is that they're going to be a little bit farther up in the air and that from farther away come in in either direction when they're manually activated. Hopefully, it'll bring more attention to it because Bard does drop off a lot of students right out here. You get 30, 40 kids come off at one time, some cross the street, some go up and down. My fear is that somebody's going to get clipped one of these days. So if we could, you know, depend upon our block grant to give us some money to get these guys installed, then I'd be pretty happy, make me feel a little bit better about the whole situation out there. So that's pretty much it. The cost that we have here is just for the actual devices themselves. I'd have to solicit from a contractor the installation costs, which I have not done yet.
And we still have, we have three calls in right now to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, just to verify if this is an eligible project. Just a couple real quick dates. October 2nd is the eligibility determination. And as to Ann Saylor, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. And we're trying to figure out exactly what is required for that determination, but maybe a phone call. Again, we have responses or requests for responses out, and hopefully it'll show response soon. And October 16th is the actual date that we have completed application submitted, and that's by 4 o'clock on a Friday. So Jay, if you want to start working on that, I'll be more than happy to help you with the narrative.
And it's a digital submission, so.
And it's probably limited characters, right?
Yeah, you only get 250 characters or whatever.
So we can't ring along on this one?
No.
So again, I'll open the floor up to anybody in the audience that may want to make a request of some project that we want to pursue. Any discussion with the board as far as any of those two projects that we have discussed so far?
Yeah, Jay, on the battery, I see the battery life is five, up to five years.
Okay.
What's the replacement cost?
That is something I have not checked on. I'm sure they'd be happy to sell us a new battery. I'll find out what that cost is.
And these aren't hardwired either. There were, I think Jay researched, three different signaling devices. One was a, the one that we're looking at now, would be mounted on a pole. The signs would be basically what we have there now. There'll be an LED, three inches by five inches, with two strobes that will be blinking intermittently, more like the lights you see on top of our police vehicles. So it should be very noticeable. The other ones they had were a ballard sensor activated one, where you walk through the ballard and it senses that someone's in the crosswalk. We felt that that may be subject to damage, especially during the winter with the plows and the drifts. And the third one was actually LEDs that were buried in the pavement. Again, same problems with the snow and perhaps some issues when we do repair the roads. We're going to be having some work done with the water, as you know, and hopefully another project down the road, so.
Restaining, not wired, is.
No wired either. And these will be the property of the Village of Red Hook. And they will be, as Jay had mentioned, they conform to the Federal Highway Administration and also the manner of uniform traffic control devices. So it's just a matter of getting our final nod from Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, and hopefully we'll see what happens.
Hopefully, they say that it's acceptable.
Anybody else? Any additional comments? I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are closed. So Jay, you'll get started on the application.
I downloaded it and sent it home today, the syllable PDA version, so.
And I'm keeping an eye on the median household income. The county has used the 2009-13 American Community Survey information, which does put us a little lower than 2010 Census data by about, you know, $5,000, which does make a big difference when we're applying for other federal and state grants. So we're keeping an eye on that. It's trending downward, which is good for us as far as the grants go. At this time, I'd like to call the order for our September 14, 2015 Village of Red Hook trustees meeting. Please join us for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its deeds and justice for all.
There are two sets of minutes. I hope that you've all had a chance to review. One is for the August 10 trustees meeting, and the other was for the August 20 trustees Does anybody have any revisions, alterations? Or additions to these minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
By your second?
Second.
Any discussion? So moved. Before we go to our regular department and community reports, I'm going to jump to the regular business agenda. And tonight, we have two presentations and guests in the audience that I'd like to offer the floor to. The first one will be listening to Asani Gunn, who is the Vice President of the Bard College Student Government. And the intention of bringing the student government to the trustees meeting is to open up a more of a dialogue between the Bard College student population, the Bard student government, the Red Hook Village Board of Trustees, and the village businesses and residences. And we've had a very good working relationship with Bard College, not only with the administration through conversations, which are still ongoing, about our bus security issues that we deal with. But we've also worked very closely with the Art Department on site plus specific, which was an outdoor sculpture show last year. The Environmental and Urban Studies Program has also helped us with the water quality study, and that's still ongoing. We worked with the Center of Pacific Engagements, who Red Hook Together, also with the American Libraries Association, the Libraries Transforming Communities. We worked with Bard on that. Currently, we're working with Bard and other community members and groups on the Sauk Hill Watershed Forum, Hard Scrabble Day. Typically, the rugby team, I believe, helps us with after-performance assistance tearing down the stage, and that does roadies to unload the equipment backup on the trucks for the vans. And we also, Ed and I, every year, participate in the Bard College Orientation Registration Day. So I'd like to open the floor to Asani Gunn, and he'll give you a brief presentation. Please.
Thanks, Brad. Okay, so this can be relatively fast. I'm going to just talk about a few things, but I have to issue a quick caveat. I mean, I'm a member of the student government, I'm representative of the student government. I'm not necessarily a representative of Bard College students or the administration. A lot of these are simply my views, as well as the student government's views. But I'm going to be talking about three things, of which I have to just deal with what I've been, what Bard Student Government and what the Mayor's Office of Red Hook, what we've been trying to do. So the first thing is Communications Committee. The second item is publicizing community events, which is tied into the first item. And then the third one is how we're trying to create a mandatory forum for new students that'll be living off-campus. So first off, so I'm a member of the student government, I'm Vice President, I'm a junior, I'm from Los Angeles, I don't really think it matters, but just so you know a little bit about me. But joining student government, something I wanted to do was try and figure out a way that we have more student involvement in a lot of these conversations because oftentimes, if it doesn't stay within the bubble that's being discussed in, then it's normally held at an administrative level, and I just see that that's been problematic. We see what's been going on within Tivoli, with the new noise ordinance, we can see sort of how the consequences play out. So joining student government, that's something I wanted to approve. So we've created a new committee, it's called the Communications Committee. And basically, through an application process, by October, we'll have six students. And these six students, we're going to have some of whom join these meetings I've been having with Brent and Ed. And then we're also going to send students to attend these Red Hook Together meetings. At these meetings, they're going to be discussing the student perspective, so we're really just looking for the cream of the crop. And then they're going to be taking notes. Those notes are going to be combined with the normal student government minutes, and that way, it will be posted onto the Bard Student Government website, as well as the Bard Student Government Facebook page. That way, students have an understanding of what's going on. Right now, I've been talking with Bard Public Relations about getting all that information included in the Daily Mail. That way, the information is somewhat unavoidable. And yeah, so that's what's going on with that new committee. We're going to be making an announcement at our big event on Wednesday, which is the Budget Forum. So something that this committee is going to be doing, moving on to the second item, publicizing community events. So something that we think would be really, really good would just be having students involved in, say, Hard Scrabble Day, and say, art events, things like that. We think that there could be a lot of really good ways that our students can provide energy, they can provide support. And more than anything, we think that it's a really good space for Bard students and residents of Red Hook, as well as Tivoli, can communicate with each other, see what they have in common. And personally, I see that as a really, really great way to build a community because, let's face it, like Bard, Red Hook, Bard, Tivoli, we're always going to be together, the relationship, the parties within the relationship, it's really inextricable. So we see this as a really, really good step forward. So by publicizing community events, we'll be sending emails to all the undergraduate population, as well as to graduate students. So we're hoping that that will improve attendance just as well. Through the Communications Committee, I'm going to have people putting up posters, we're going to have people publicizing those events on social media. So it's another really good way to get our students involved. So the next thing is this mandatory forum. So there's, this is still a work in progress. This started off as an idea when I was meeting with Brent and Ed and the President of the Student Government, his name is Seth. And we think that this would be a really, really good idea. So let me just run it, give you like a quick schedule of what this would be. So Bard has, I think, about 500 off-campus students every year. That's a lot of students. And a lot of them come from households wherein they don't really know what it means to be a good neighbor. And from living in the residence halls, I've come to understand that. So this mandatory forum, the way that we envision this would be sort of an intimate roundtable discussion with food to make sure people come. And it would involve, you know, student government, it would involve some administrators from Bard, it would involve officials from Tivoli, from Red Hook, as well as some Bard alums that still live within the area. So then Bard students can give their perspective, and then we have basically a panel of people giving their perspective. And something that is a bit tricky, but I've been talking with one of the administrators about, is making it so in order to apply off-campus, students have to go to one of these information sessions. I think that in the long run, this is something that's going to be absolutely amazing for the community, and it looks like everything will be set for this. The quickest this could happen, this forum could happen, would be next semester. If not, it would be next spring. And the reason why I say spring is because that's when students have to apply to live off-campus anyway, so holding it all just wouldn't really make much sense. So those are the three items.
Thank you, Asani.
Thank you.
And the next presentation we'll have is regarding Hoffman Farms Development. We have, all three are going to be up there, right? We have Rodney Morrison from the LR Seafood, Richard Rang from Kirchhoff Properties, and Richard Barkey from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And they'll be giving an informational public presentation to the Board of Trustees. Since this is not a public hearing, but an informational session. And the water rates that may come up, this is an ongoing discussion with the Board of Trustees. And as the Mayor returns, we'll get into more discussions about the rates. But we want to give Kirchhoff Properties and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, which have been approached by the Town of Red Hook to own and operate this district, a chance to discuss further what their intentions were and some of their ideas toward this new district. So please.
I trust, can everybody see this? Many of the board members are familiar with the project, but we'll give a little overview. Back in 2011, the Town of Red Hook adopted the traditional neighborhood development district, in essence, to focus development in and around the village itself, as opposed to in some of the more rural sections of the town. And also, at the same time, adopted the ag business district, by which when development occurs here, either through the outright purchase of development rights or the funding of the potential purchase of development rights, the development occurs here and it preserves the farm within the town. This is the first application under this new zoning. The Hoffman Farm Project, Old Farm Road, movie theater is here, here's the Hoffman barn sale, okay? The village boundary is right here, so we have a common line with the village. The project consists of 102 homes. We have some cottage homes, we have some townhomes, four-unit attached townhome-type buildings, and single-family homes. Right now, the proposal is entirely to be fee simple, everybody will own their own lot. But there will be a homeowners association, they'll be responsible for the maintenance of the common alleys that serve many of the properties, lawn maintenance, open space, and civic space parcels, we live within. Additionally, you'll have a community center. And this small building here, right at this park, that's going to be created in the first phase, is in essence a male kiosk, but it's going to be built to look like a small post office. We think it's going to be a great addition to the town, to the village, we think that it's going to be a very successful project. We think the demographics of the potential homebuyers in this community are going to range from, you know, first-time homebuyers to empty nesters. Many of the homes are being designed with masters down to accommodate that demographic as well. Water for the project, as you know, the village is currently serviced through this community right here. Our proposal is to extend the water line along Old Farm Road, along our entire frontage, and then loop the system throughout the community. We've been working with the village in terms of the availability of capacity, and we've been talking, as we mentioned, about the rates that we potentially think. Since it's outside the village, the village's service ends basically where we're going to put a master meter. Beyond that, the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority will be responsible for the operation and maintenance, dealing with flushing lines, dealing with billing of individuals, responding to any service-related calls, any of the problems that people may have. So basically, the village gets one new connection, one new user, and then the rest of the management of the system is going to be the responsibility of the Water and Wastewater Authority. Anything else you need to know about the project I can tell you? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Bridget to talk a little bit about the program we're talking about.
Actually, it's time. I've got some handouts. I'm going to give it to the board members, as well as actually anybody in the audience wants one. I wasn't sure how many people were here, so I'm going to give some of these.
Do you have enough for the whole board, Bridget?
Pardon?
How many do you have for the board? Do you have enough of that?
Yeah, I have theirs, there's some extras. Rod also made large-sized charts of the same thing that you're going to be looking at there. Start with, I'm going to go with water production. So as Rich mentioned, after discussions with the project sponsor and the Town of Red Hook, the intent is to go forward with the creation of a county-level water district that encompasses all of the properties that will be in the Hoffman development. Our organization, the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, will manage and administer, operate that internal system, which for ease of discussion, they call the Hoffman Water System going forward. We will be responsible for maintaining all the pipes within that water system, for providing any service to the customers that's requested, doing any sampling and monitoring that's required by the regulatory agencies, reading the meters on the individual customers within the Hoffman development, and doing the billing, collecting the charges from those customers. There will be, as Rich mentioned, a master meter at the point where the Hoffman system connects to the village. And essentially, from the village water system's perspective, it's going to look like you have one more customer, albeit one large customer. So that's the intention of how we're looking to go forward. So it will ultimately be our organization, the Water and Wastewater Authority, that would enter an agreement with the village to purchase the water from you, that we would then resell within the Hoffman water system. So what we did to help begin the process of talking about the water sale agreement that we hope will ultimately come about between the village and our authority, one of the major components of that was to say is going to be what are the financial impacts on the village water system, what are the financial impacts on the Hoffman project, what is the budget for that, what are the water rates at which that water sold to the Hoffman project going to look like? So to get that discussion started, we took a copy provided to us by the Mayor of the village's 2015-2016 water system budget, and looked at that in terms of how is that budget impacted by the addition of the Hoffman water system as a customer. So the first thing we did was to look at water production. How much water is your village water system producing now? How much water are you going to need to produce to serve the Hoffman property? You may remember, back in February or so, the village did provide a letter to the project sponsors indicating that you were tentatively committing to selling up to about 81,000 gallons per day of water to the Hoffman project. Since that time, the Dutchess County Health Department has revised the water demand figures that they're requiring the Hoffman project to use to ensure that they've got a sufficient water supply for their project. They are now using a figure of 47,700 gallons per day as the maximum day demand from this community. So that means in, you know, the Fourth of July weekend, when it's hot and people are watering the lawns and the sprinklers going and they're topping off the pool, you're going to expect not more than 47,700 gallons per day of water. Everybody knows what you use on a max day is not reflective of what your average is. We also all know that for the purpose of design standards, the Health Department uses very, very conservative assumptions. So what we did was we looked at long-term history we have from metered, single-family residential customers, to get a better sense of what do we expect that these 102 houses are actually going to use. And our experience is very consistent across all of our systems, and in particular with relatively smaller households like this, not huge lawns, where people are going to be doing a lot of watering of lawns. Realistically, you're looking at about 150 gallons per day per household. So that's what we've based these numbers here. You've got, I think, the first page of what I gave you indicates Hoffman water purchased from village. We've gone through 102 houses, 150 houses, 150 gallons per house per day, gives you an average daily use times 365 days. You're looking at about 5 million, 5.5 million gallons over the course of a year. And then we added in a factor of about 10% for unbilled water. The amount of water that actually goes through a customer's meter and is used inside their residence is less than the amount of water you're actually going to send into that system because of flushing of the water system, because of potential use of hydrants, because of potential inaccuracies in meters. So we used a factor of about 10% to say, okay, our best estimate is there's going to be about 6 million gallons of water additional produced by the village to serve the Hoffman project. Based on figures that the village provided, that is in the report that Robert has done for the village, you're looking at an average gallon per day right now, about 242,000 gallons. That's about 88 million gallons a year. When you add the Hoffman water to that, you're talking about an increase of about 7% in the amount of water that the village is going to produce in order to provide service to the Hoffman project. the Hoffman project. So the next thing we did is, how does that affect the village's expenses to operate the water system? What costs are going to see go up? What costs are you going to expect to stay the same? Because Hoffman, again, for the village, is effectively going to be a single customer with one meter, you're not going to be doing billing, you're not going to be doing the meter reading for the 102 households within Hoffman, you're not, the village isn't going to own any additional infrastructure. So there's a lot of expense items in your budget, that you really don't expect to be impacted by the addition of one new and large customer. You would expect that in proportion to the amount of water you're producing, your electric costs are going to go up, your well pumps are going to run more, your chemical costs are going to go up because you're going to treat more water. So those are really the two items in the budget that you really expect are going to be proportional to the amount of water that you produce, and therefore you would expect that would go up about 7%. When we did this evaluation, just to be a little more conservative, we added that same 7% increase factor to a couple of other lines in the budget for equipment, generator fuel, obviously even electric, miscellaneous in part because we weren't sure what was included in miscellaneous, so we said, okay, it goes up. Water purification is related to your chemical costs. And, you know, again, this is a beginning point on the conversation. You all know your budget much better than we do. If there are lines here that you think are going to be impacted, other than we've done with this just first, general projections, you know, that's the kind of discussion that we want to have with the village going forward. But just to get sort of a general idea for starters of how the village budget's going to be impacted by the addition of the Hoffman system, is what we're providing again as a starting point. So even though you're producing about 7% more water, it's not going to be a 7% increase in your expenses. You're going to have an operator there to operate your wells, to oversee the daily sampling you're required to do by the health department. That's not going to change because you've added Hoffman as a customer. Your insurance for the infrastructure that the village owns is not going to change because you've added Hoffman as a customer. So again, the overall impact in the expenses is not going to be proportional to the amount of additional water that you're going to produce. So we came up overall with an estimate of about, and again, a ballpark figure, you're going to be looking at about $3,700 increase in your expenses to provide water to the Hoffman project. The other side of the budget equation, obviously, then, is the revenues. We looked at the impact on the revenue and the rate side from two different perspectives. One approach was to look not specifically at your current rate structure, but just to provide an apples to apples comparison. You have a certain revenue need. Right now, it's about $430,300 a year. With the expense increase that we're projecting to provide that additional water for Hoffman, you're going to be looking at needing about $434,000 a year in revenue. And you're going to generate that revenue by selling the water. So again, for an apples to apples comparison, you can reflect that as a cost per gallon of water that you sell. So right now, to raise $430,000 by selling 88 million gallons of water over the course of a year, it comes out to about $4.75 per gallon. When you add the Hoffman project in, again, it's a single customer for you, but it's a customer that has a high water use relative to, obviously, like a single family customer, small business, and so on. So you've got that 7% increase in the amount of water that you're selling, but a significantly smaller increase in the amount of expenses that you're going to incur. So again, looking at it on that apples to apples basis, to generate that new revenue number that you need with the larger volume of water that you're going to be selling, you could do that with a rate of about $4.48 per thousand gallons. So it's about a 6% decrease in what the current rate is. Now, we all know that that's not necessarily how things work in the real world, and you're constantly looking at increased expenses because chemical costs go up, electric costs go up, and with all the improvements that you're making to the system, we know that you're plugging debts or missed expenses into your budget now. You're going to continue, you know, hopefully, rent with a lot of grant money, but, you know, there are probably going to be some loans mixed in there, so as you do more improvements to the system, there are going to be some additional expenses. So the other way to look at the benefit of bringing the Hoffman project in as a large customer is, to what extent can the new revenues from that customer offset increases that you would otherwise need to make in your rate? So this last page on the handout, revenues assuming that the current village Red Hook rates are applied at the Hoffman master meter. We took your existing rate structure, we said, okay, the Hoffman master meter is one customer. When you apply your current rate structure to the amount of water we anticipate is going to flow through that meter, you're going to generate about $29,000 a year from that water sale. In terms of the benefit that that provides to the system, if you're looking at about $29,000 more in revenue, you've got some less than a $4,000 increase we're projecting in terms of the expenses you're going to incur, you come out about $25,000 a year. And again, it's just a different way of looking at what the benefit to the Red Hook system is, that you've got those additional revenues now that you can use to help to meet some of the anticipated increases in expenses as you work to make the improvements to the system. So again, it's intended to be a starting point in the discussion, a general overview of the way we see the Hoffman project impacting the budget. You obviously all know your budget better than we do, but I think the key points are that we believe that it's, I hate to use the cliche, but a win-win situation, that by generating, much of the revenues that you need really are fixed expenses. And by being able to generate those revenues over a larger customer base, a larger volume of water sales, you're going to be able to benefit the water system, you're going to be able to benefit the current customers, and we're going to be able to sell water within the Hoffman project at an affordable rate that's going to help make those units attractive for the Kyrchov companies to build them, and for people to come and buy them, and come and live here, and be good, happy citizens of the town of Red Hook, and shoppers and visitors to the village of Red Hook. So we're looking forward to working with the village to go through the details of what the water sale agreement will ultimately look like, but hope this is something that can help get the conversation started. So, questions, comments?
Just real quickly, I think our first concern was just if we had enough water because we do have some future needs that we're anticipating, and I think with the help of the Dutchess County Department of Health lowering your anticipated max day flow from 81.6 to 48,000, around there, that was a big, big help there. Phase two, as you know, one of the primary reasons for phase two, we're currently losing about 40% of the water that we're pumping versus what we're selling, and we're hoping to, by doing the water improvements, this for phase two, will start to realize additional gains in our water surplus that we have. The third issue that the village has, this is just for public knowledge, too, we have a major swing in our max day flow versus our average day flow. And we don't know precisely why that is, but one of the reasons we thought was that the time that the meters are read at the well field site, they're read on a daily basis. Usually during Monday through Friday, they're read, they're read on a regularly scheduled time. Weekends, they may go, instead of being read in the morning, they're read in the evening, which adds another eight to 12 hours to the reading, giving us a larger number. So we just started within the last month and a half with the new controls that we've installed for phase one, to automatically read the meters at the, at the well field at the same time each day. So we're still compiling that data, but we're assuming that will minimize that max day flow, and it would show us actually with more water surplus than we had originally intended. So I believe at the last workshop meeting, the consensus of the board anyway, it was that we did have enough water to supply the Hoffman farm. As far as the rates, you know, that's still, we're looking at many different constraints. You've heard what some of them are, they've been put in the paper as well. And we're continuing that discussion amongst the board, and the village board trustees also serves as the water, the water board. And so we like this as a, as a good starting point, and we agree with, you know, a lot of, I guess, the rationale behind that. And we'll be looking at further to, you know, bring in some other aspects and, you know, working together with the results of the rate structure. So is there any other questions from the board?
No, not right now.
No, thank you then.
Sure. Thank you.
Again, the board, we will be discussing this at depth in the future, near future. Did you have any questions, Robert?
No.
Anything that you've heard differently this time than you did last time?
I guess just to confirm some of the numbers that were used for the assumptions, or numbers that we've checked, and they, you know, we agree with them, you know, like 150 gallons per user, that's very consistent with the single family homes in the village of Red Hook. That's, we looked at 2014, and the average was like 154. So it's 150 plus or minus 5 gallons per day, pretty accurate.
And these numbers came from, we're actually using this data from the sewer project, and this was based on actual four quarter readings, one year worth of readings based on our new meters. So if you remember last time, for the sewer project, we were using, again, based on our water meter reading, an average of 250 gallons per day. And by just installation of the meters and a very active reading of these new meters, we were able to lower that by almost 100 gallons per day per single family dwelling, which is great. So we're making progress on all our water projects, and we'll have to roll that into some of the data that you've included on that and maybe the rates, and get back to you sooner, I know you're anxious to go on the project. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll resume with the department and committee reports, and we'll start with the treasurer's report. Treasurer?
Treasurer.
Treasurer called.
Thank you for that. Okay, account balances, September 14th, general fund, $690,827.7. Water fund, $164,355.91. Trust and agency, $18,471.12. Materials management, $7,728.67. Petty cash, $27.85. Village green, $3,736.88. Arts gravel, $15,335.48. Health insurance, $6,031.79. And then capital projects, zero, which is where it should be. Monthly expenses, general fund, $144,744.52. Water fund expenses, $15,791.46. Trust and agency, $18,471.12. And materials management, $5,420.13.
I would entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report as submitted.
Submissed.
Is that your second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Sorry.
I'll go to the Red Hook Village. Monthly police report totals, this is the month of August 2015, incidents, 317 total, 225 in the village of Red Hook, 86 in the town of Red Hook, and 6 in the village of Tippely. Uniform traffic tickets, 122 total. Of that, 99 were in the village of Red Hook, and this includes 4 parking tickets and 23 in the town of Red Hook. There were 21 total arrests, 14 in the village of Red Hook, and 7 in the town of Red Hook. And trustee Trapp, if you'd be still kind?
Brent.
I'm sorry.
In the previous months, since about April, August, I've been asking, have, have the police been doing any foot patrols or bike patrols? And every month, being told that the question's going to be asked, and it, the reports clearly state there's no, there's nothing being done about foot patrols or bike patrols.
There's one foot patrol for Apple Ring Road.
Oh, there is? Excuse me. In the town?
Yeah, but not in the village.
Not in the village. And then this weekend, I think it was Saturday, on Time Warner Cable, their news channel, Channel 6, they did a report on the town of, the village of Rhinebeck, and how they're doing foot patrols and their officers are getting out and meeting the public, meeting the people, and how well it's being received. Can we give a report if Red Hook's going to do this, or if we're just going to not get out, meet the people, and drive cars around?
Brent and I both have pretty strong feelings about how effective that is, that getting, you know, putting your feet on the ground, walking around, and just saying hello to people out there makes a big difference on how the police force is perceived.
Yes.
I wonder, I mean, is there some resistance? I mean, that you're aware of, I haven't spoken to Patrick or any of the guys specifically, just curious.
Yeah, I, I think I've brought it up a few times to Patrick, the mayor usually takes care of the police.
Correct.
So we'll bring it up again. He's due back this week, and I would suggest, you know, call him Saturday, I'm sure he'll be around all day, would be a great day for conversation, and probably a great day to see more foot patrols and bike patrols on our gravel day, so.
Yes, we'll see it, we'll see it that day because they do it every year, but how about the days after?
Yeah.
You know?
I agree.
I know you agree with me, and that's, we've talked many times about it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, trustee Trapp on zoning and planning.
Okay, we're, we're trying to sort of diversify a little bit in the planning and zoning office. We're trying to get Sam a little bit of assistance, and not split, but give him a little more time to be code enforcement officer, and maybe have someone that could work on zoning issues, because those, the zoning issues, as you well know, pop up from time to time, and you have to do a lot more, more time. It's less paperwork and more time in the field, and we're, we're working on having somebody give Sam a little bit of assistance at that point. There, we're working on a few, a little, little logistics to make sure that this person can get out there, and we're, you know, I guess, just officially sort of contacted, so her name's Mary Ellen Cookingham. Brent and I both know her from, from our time as planning and zoning chairman, when she, she was instrumental in kind of keeping us on the straight and narrow, I guess. She, she knows codes very well, she knows how to handle herself, and she's thorough, so I feel that when, when she gets out there, we're, we're going to provide her with an ID. She's very cautious about, people don't know her, she wants to have an ID before she goes out there. I have requested that she give me a headshot, and I'll prepare her an ID and give I have requested that she give me a headshot and I'll prepare her an ID and get it, you know, laminated and all that sort of stuff so she can wear it like a lanyard, you know. So that, I don't know when she's actually going to actually hit the streets. So that's, that's just coming, so. In terms of monthly planning and zoning report, we issued only two building permits this past month, no CBOs. Four certificates of compliance were issued. Sam conducted 10 municipal searches, no orders to remedy, no stop work, no court appearances, no fire inspections, and no complaints. Fire inspections are generally done pretty close to all at one time, as they have, most of them are just annuals. So he takes care of those at one shot. The planning board had, meeting August 13th, had two items on their agenda. Motion to approve resolution to extend approval, primary subdivision for Anderson Commons way in the back, and site plan application for lyceum partners, and it was stable to the September 10th meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals had no, no business on the agenda. And for the record, like to anybody that is, well, George, are you going Thursday? You doing the PV thing in Millbrook?
There's two things in Millbrook, I'm going to the one on zoning.
Okay.
The other one I'm not going.
We have a, the 24th of September, Thursday, we have Duchess County Planning Federation is putting on a program on how to actually construct your legislation for photovoltaics. It's a huge issue. I'm code official in another municipality, and there are questions swirl around these things. You know, they're on the ground, they're in the air, they reflective. You know, tell me about the structure, I don't like them in my yard, I don't like them in my neighbor's yard. So there are a lot of questions that come up. And they're, you know, when is it a utility, when is it not a utility, how big is it, and so forth. So we're having our good friends Jessica Batcher and Dr. John Nolan going to come down and put on a nice presentation and speak. And for those of you who show up, it's $5 and we feed you and you get an education. So I don't think it gets a lot better than that. So hopefully, planning and zoning board members are out there somewhere. You need to show up, so, and you need to get your credit hours too. Finally, let's see, this past month, building department took in $958. So this is our, you know, time when we make money during the winter. People tend to hibernate up here and nothing goes on, so make hay while the sun shines.
Great.
I'm done.
Thanks, Dan.
You bet.
And we'll move on to trustee Norris, he has materials management and celebrations.
We'll start with materials management. For the month of August, we sold $3,555 in garbage tags and paid out $1,399.72. We had 13.13 tons of garbage and 7.82 tons of single-street recycling. And the numbers were slightly higher than in July and basically on average, so, hooray. Past events, over 90 people came out and enjoyed the community potluck and picnic in the park that we had in August. That was the fourth time we've done that. Music was provided by Grass Fed Bluegrass Band. The food and company and weather was great. Thanks to the highway department for setting up the stage and moving the tables and the garbage cans to the park for the event. We plan to do that again next year, so there you go. I'm up to my eyeballs in hardscrabble day, which will be this Saturday, September 19th, from 10 to 10. As usual, we'll have vendors, foods, kids' events, and a parade at 4:00. The kid's scrabble area on the Key Bank lawn will feature the Bard Surrealist Training Circus. You were talking before about getting together with Bard and I talked to someone at Bard and they said, "Oh, we've got this circus." So they're going to come and they're going to teach the kids how to juggle and do acrobatics and stuff like that. They're going to be in the parade, so it's going to be great. Our grand marshals for the parade are going to be Amy Robinson and Lisa Glick. Both are retired music and chorus teachers from the Red Hook School District. Our main stage entertainment will be Jackie Green, and we'll have local music all day. So that will be a good, a good day, hopefully. The next day is the annual Ketcharay 5K that's being held Sunday, September 20th, in memory of Alexandra Ray Gravino. For more information, go to ketcharay.org. Village of Tively will hold their annual street painting festival on Saturday, August 3rd.
October 3rd.
October 3rd. Did I say I was up to my eyeballs in hardscrabble still? I can't wait for Sunday! Sorry. Did I say that out loud? Okay, Red Hook Halloween will actually be on Halloween this year, it'll be Saturday, October 31st, from 12 to 2:00 in the parking lot. There's a parade, there's arts and crafts, people love it, so we're working on that. And new this year, one of our local merchants is a dog boutique. It's called Paw's Dog Boutique, they're right on 199. And they would like to have a dog Halloween party, parade, festival, as it were. I'm still working out the details with them, but they would like for it to be, that's actually the incorrect date. They cannot do it on that Saturday. It would be Sunday, October 25th, I believe. Yes, that had to be changed. So they would like to do it, Sunday, October 25th, from 11:00 to 2:00 in our parking lot. They would like us to close part of the parking lot. They envision different vendors, some with actual service, you know, paid vendors, but also a lot of nonprofits with animal rescues and that sort of situation. We've agreed on a similar agreement which, that we have with the farmer's market where anyone who sells stuff pays us $5 for that. So we're working on the details of that, there's going to be a dog costume parade. So it's something new that they'd like to try and, and I'm all for helping merchants and seeing dogs in costumes is bound to be hilarious, so. So I personally would like to support them and see how it goes. Again, it doesn't expend any of our services, other than we close the parking lot for a couple hours on a Sunday morning, so. There you go.
And I'd just touch a little bit on that. Again, this $5 fee is a similar fee that we charge per vendor at that farmer's market. And this, we do open the building up, and we do have ADA accessible bathrooms that we open to the public in those days. And so part of that cost is we can't give to vendors who are making a profit in the parking lot. This is a small fee we charge for maintenance and cleanup after the, after the thing. So I would like to just entertain a motion to permit that. Halloween, as it's called, on October 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At the Red Hook Village Municipal Parking Lot, a $5 fee per vendor would be required.
Would we do the, put the signs out like the night before?
Yeah, so we have, right now, we have two signs that we usually put out Saturday morning to close the east side of the parking lot. And so we'll settle over that. People are just now getting the hang of it.
Yeah.
After we're almost done. But I think we'll try that. So the motion's been made, I guess I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and just one quick last thing. I feel like I'm Julie McCoy here, there's like 12 cousins and things going on. The second annual Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival will be Saturday, November 7th. So mark your calendars on that. That's run by the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce, and for more information, you can go to redhookchamber.org.
And I know Kim's been very busy organizing that one as well.
Yep, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jen. Just these are the facilities and water.
Okay, for the water report for the month of August. The water treatment plant treated 7,429,000 gallons of water with an average daily flow of 239,000 gallons. The plant used 80 gallons of liquid hyperchlorite solution with a daily average of 2.5 gallons. During August of 2014, 14, the plant treated 7,399,000 gallons with an average daily flow of 239,000. Drinking water, two drinking water samples and one well 15 and raw water sample were sent to the lab for bacteriological testing, all returned a negative result. Conservation tip, do you put these, add these on here?
Brent does add. Sorry, Brent.
I put it in the notes.
Oh, do you?
Great.
Replace a five-gallon flush commode with a modern 1.6-gallon flush commode. Is one of the easiest upways of already conservative household can reduce their consumption. Not only would it resolve in a lower bill or reduce, and reduce demand for villages aquifer, it would give a sharp new look to the bathroom.
Where does he get this stuff?
Do you have like a conservation tip a day calendar or something?
The interesting thing about that is that the, the potential for the houses at the Hoffman, all of these guys will have the more energy-efficient fixtures and faucets and everything. So that 150 that we said was comparable to the villages at 154 is probably, in reality, going to be less than that, so.
And then we'll find out once they're up and running.
Yep.
Is that monitoring? Anything else, Steve?
Yes, as part of, as part of my other, some of my other duties, for the facilities, Brent and myself have been meeting, and we find that there's a lack of information about available to Cindy, available to everybody within the building. For, if, if electrician is needed, who do we call? If the generator aside fails to start, who do we call? And I'm going through now and starting to take our list that we have and updating them as necessary, and expanding on who we can call and such. And another one is the security monitor, the cameras we have around the building. Right now, it's not advantageous for Cindy to see it, but yet Cindy's in the building sometimes by herself and has no idea, has no way of knowing who walks, walks in the door. So I'll be, I'm working on that and have a further report next month and keep you updated on it.
Thanks. And we've been just talking about just developing an outline, a list of vendors for service, maintenance, inspections, and emergency. So this is something that I think we need, seems that every time Ed leaves town, something happens. And it'd be nice to have the list, so, you know, we're doing all right with what we have. But we'd just be a little bit more comprehensive in our preparedness there. I guess it's my turn. I'll start with the Village Green Committee. The current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, contractual expenses, we have $3,893.53. Shade tree contractual, we have $10,451.27. We obviously didn't get to build yet from the trees that we pruned and/or removed. And the Village Green Committee checking account, we have a balance of $3,736.88. The Village Green Committee met on August 18th. Brenda Kangold, Dave Pearson, Jeffrey Urban, Frances Yuku, and myself attended. We discussed hardscrabble day and the possible events and demonstration at display tables were discussed. We talked about the fall planting day, so we have two tentative dates. And this is all hinging on when we can get the trees and the availability of the trees, which we just placed an order today for 13, possibly three more, so 16 total. So the two dates we have set up as tentative, and we'll do an email blast to all the volunteers to be Saturday, October 31st, and/or, or Saturday, November 7th. And we'll welcome Bard students to help participate because our, our volunteers are, been doing this for a long time and certainly can use the youthful enthusiasm and muscle of the youth.
Just so you're aware, the 31st is Halloween in the village and the 7th is the chocolate festival. Just so you're aware. So you can plant trees and then get chocolate.
Yeah, that's, trees usually take, will start at 9 o'clock and we're done typically by 10:30, 11:00. And there's a luncheon over at the town hall for the volunteers, but, you know, we can get lunch and have dessert. So they were playing that by ear. Again, it depends on when, we have to get the trees in. So we're working hard on that. We also talked about membership responsibilities. Jeffrey Urban, they volunteered to acquire additional signs when we plant, treat planted by the Village Green Committee. We're trying to recruit additional volunteers like we just did with the study here tonight. And we're also looking at more communications. Frances Yuku volunteered to reestablish the Village Green website and outline the possibilities of establishing a Twitter and Instagram account to describe, support, and promote activities of the Village Green Committee. So looking forward to more exposure, I guess, and to the public. So that's going forward. The village highway department monthly report. The village highway department is currently picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Mondays of the month. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris, brush, and grass clippings in separate piles curbside before the scheduled pickup. Please store debris out of sight until the scheduled dates to prevent conflicts with other services such as materials management pickup and to keep streets clean and free of windborne debris. And also, we're requesting that you limit the size of the brush piles to no larger than six feet by six feet by six feet, and that's determined by the size of our bucket under front-end motor and with tree branches no larger than eight inches in diameter. And please do not include any tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors and/or tree maintenance companies, that's their responsibility to hire and take it away. The village highway department will be repaving Fifth Street from South Broadway to Thompson Street on September 16th and 17th. Residents have been given notice of this project, I think today they were given the notice. The village board of trustees approved this project at the August 10th, 2015 meeting. The estimated cost of this specific project of repaving Fifth Street is $30,000 maximum and will be deducted from the fiscal year 2015-16 general fund consolidated highway improvement program budget line. And I think Dan's working on some pretty, pretty good deals as far as cost sharing and equipment sharing with the town of Red Hook. So they'll even lower that cost further. The final segment involving repair of the pavement sensor on the southbound lane of North Broadway at the Market Street Broadway traffic light was completed by the New York State DOT on September 1st, 2015. Hopefully, you'll notice more, or less congestion and more flow of traffic. So that was, that was good. I think we resorted to have that repaired in 2016, so we did get to move it forward. The village of Red Hook Highway Department was informed that the cost of salt used during winters, no removal procedures, has increased from $64 a ton to $90 a ton. Represents an approximate 30% increase in material costs. The village shares the cost of material with the town of Reddick Highway Department, Reddick Central School District, and the village of Tively EPW. This winter, the highway departments will use a mixture of one-third salt, two-thirds sand instead of the usual 50/50 mix to reduce the cost. So there'll probably be more gravel out on the streets than normal, but we're trying to keep the cost down and keep taxes at bay. The village received a status report of August 25th from the Duchess County regarding the Linden Avenue Bridge. Design and construction documents are 90% complete. They are scheduled to be finished and ready for bid advertisement by early to mid-October. Rightaway acquisition and purchase agreements for the four necessary properties are anticipated to be complete by mid-September. Bids are anticipated to be opened at the end of October in 2015. And pile driving and demolition work should begin by mid to late November. Construction of the new bridge foundations and deck replacement will proceed in April of 2016, and the bridge construction project is anticipated to be complete by August of 2016. The town of Reddick has also issued a courtesy request that no motorized vehicles use the new town park extension on the west side of Linden Avenue. new town rec park extension on the west side of Linden Avenue. The sensitive park land in the early stages of development may be used for passive recreation such as walking, hiking, biking, and cross-country skiing, home and parking for these activities is, is available at existing rec park, north parking lot on the east side of Linden Avenue. And although two dumpsters of scrap metal have been collected and delivered to the vendor, no scrap metal revenue has been received during the month of August. We just got the chat.
Today.
Today for the first one. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $18,477.74 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management Departments. And anyone interested, residents or businesses, and donate scrap metal can contact the Highway Department at 758-8600, leave a message, or the Village Clerk's Office. And the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. Intermunicipal Task Force and the Red Hook Infrastructure Month Report, the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on August 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th at the Village Building. Representatives from CT Mail, Ed Blundell, myself attended. Good news is, is the workforce accounts of the in-kind services provided by Ed Blundell and myself. We had close to 200 hours, 175 hours combined in-kind service hours at a value of about With the requisition and wire transfer instructions were submitted to the New York State EFC on August 14th, 2015 for reimbursement from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and Department of Environmental Conservation Engineering Planning Grant. The $30,000 grant award with the minimum required and $7,500 matching the application, so we kind of blew that one out of the water, was used to prepare the engineering report and water quality study of June 2015. Reimbursement from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation in the amount of $15,000 was transferred to the village accounts on August 20th. And these funds were deposited in the grants from other governments budget line 82706C. And then we'll be acting upon that as a, as a budget adjustment in our regular business agenda. An initial application for the USDA rural development funding was prepared on August 7th and September 4th. There were 15 documents required for pre-application. We submitted all but number 15, which we're working on, right Robert? And that's the environmental report. So there were, these are required forms and we've been working on them and we actually sent them out via email. We were notified that they wanted hard copies, which we, we did. And we also reviewed the sewer district map, including tree zones of assessment. We reviewed the map showing the area of influence based on the water quality study. And we met the Bound Council on August 28th to review the procedures and process eligibility and requirements of a permissive referendum, a public referendum and a non-refereendum requirement based on the New York State General Municipal Law for Villages. And this looks at basically benefit assessments versus user fees. So we're looking at a lot of options right now as well as a lot of grants. I think we have close to three and a half million dollars worth of grant applications out there, um, including the USDA, um, to try to lower this cost. This is a 4.9 estimated cost of construction primarily in the general business district for this to be happening. The Red Hook Water Projects, the meetings were held on August 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th at the Red Hook Village Buildings. CT Mail, representatives, myself and Ed attended. Currently as of today, I believe we have approximately, we do have 20 contractors that have requested bid documents since the project was advertised on July 31st. Bid estimates are due and will be opened on October 2nd, 2015 at the Village Building. And the following is the anticipated remaining schedule come after opening of the bids. The next one on October 19th, which is our next trustees meeting, the Red Hook Village Board of Trustees will award the contract to the successful bidder. October 21st, we'll issue a notice of award to the successful builder. These are anticipated by the way. November 4th, we're hoping to issue the notice to proceed upon the signed contract and approved insurance bonds. And November 5th would be the earliest starting date. May of 2017 would be the anticipated project completion date. And this is 565 calendar days after date when contract kind of commences. We also finished up our prior to bid bidding phase documents to USDA. These are some outstanding things that didn't affect the process to go out for bid, but we have everything in on that. And then on 2015 New York State Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant application was signed by Ed Blundell on August 28th and submitted to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation on September 3rd. The villages requested a grant award of $2 million for Phase Two Water Project. The 2015 Water Infrastructure Improvement Act adopted by the New York State Legislature allocated $30 million for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is sewer projects, and $20 million for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the fiscal year 2015 and 16. Up to 20 million that was in the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, 75% of the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund grants will be awarded to projects that qualify for hardship financing and 25% for awarded to projects that are shovel-ready. We did not qualify for hardship for the water. We did for the sewer, but we are indeed shovel-ready. I don't know if you can get more shovel-ready than out the bid. So we're hopeful as we always are. Do you know when we're supposed to hear from, if we got the award or not?
No, I don't think they gave us a clue, but I'm, I'm giving them at least 60 days.
Yeah. So 2 million over 3.8 million, that would be certainly helpful and would help us propel us into, I think, Phase Three a little bit quicker. The 2015 Community Development Block Grant, these are, these are sidewalk reconstructions and ADA sidewalks for the firehouse. Two sets of preliminary bid documents were delivered to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development on September 4th for their review. The planning department must approve the documents prior to the Village of Red Hook advertising for bids. So we're waiting their review. I know they sent it out to their plan reviewer when I called Monday, Tuesday, last Tuesday. So hopefully we're soon we'll get that out. Construction of the 2015 Community Development Block Grant project actually has to be complete later than August of 2016. We could apply for extensions if we want, but 2000, August should be plenty of time to put in what we want to do. Now, the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, we just concluded our public hearing and we will be passing the, hopefully at least considering passing resolution in our regular business agenda. The Red Hook Trails Plan, a map with the proposed trails is currently, was currently on display in the Red Hook Village Building and is also, um, put out at Farmer's Market. And this was to encourage the public to add comments, suggestions, and additional information to this map. The plan aims to connect residents and visitors of the Town of Red Hook to townwide destinations including Village Red Hook, Village of Tivoli, Bard College, and various parks and historic sites through a connected trail system for bicyclists and pedestrians. The Intermunicipal Task Force, which I'm a member of, we meet every Friday as we have been for the last 12, 13 years. We met on August 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th at the Red Hook Town Hall. A summary and narrative was prepared for the proposed historic structures and districts Sony Law for presentation to the Red Hook Town Board on September 23rd. And then various stakeholders meetings will be scheduled to address those concerns for people who live in the proposed affected areas. Claudine Close of Historic Red Hook and Warren Temple Smith of Hudson River Heritage with Michelle Gregg of Green Plan were guests of the task force on August 21st. We discussed contributing and non-contributing structures, criteria and procedures for the certificate of appropriateness. We reviewed application procedures currently implemented by the Town of Ryan Beck and Hamlet of Ryan Cliff and the definition of regulated structures were discussed. A fact sheet and draft letter to stakeholders within the proposed historic district area were drafted to review by the task force for review and comment by the Red Hook Town One more. These are various other committees here. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are village liaisons of that. The meeting was held on August 12th in the Red Hook Village Building. We discussed, interviewed Discover Red Hook Custom Valley, which is a website that was just launched. We also looked at the Facebook page, which has also been launched. These are for anybody, businesses, groups, um, to share our logo on that and then they'll be automatically linked with a broader, broader web of interconnected businesses, organizations throughout the whole Town of Red Hook. An interview and article with the Hudson River Chronicle is expected to occur in September. We also approved operating maintenance fees for the community calendar. There's a new Discover Red Hook Custom Valley bumper sticker and these will be on sale at Hardscrabble Day and then after that at various businesses throughout the village. Dutchess County is planning a virtual broker tour. This is Dutchess County Tourism with Northern Dutchess Alliance, actually Northern Dutch County at Display is planning a virtual broker tour to showcase available commercial properties in the county, including vacant buildings and land available for commercial development. The Village of Red Hook and the EDC suggest priority buildings and parcels for consideration. An event sponsored by Dutchess County is being planned in mid-October to organize and prepare this virtual tour. The Community Preservation Fund, Farm Land Protection Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of, representing the village. There were no meetings held during the month of August. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of August 31st, 2015 is $189,145.91. And there are projects that could occur within the Village of Red Hook. There's a fairly broad list of eligible projects and we would certainly love to have some business at these meetings. So can we view it on the website, the town's website? I don't know if it's on the village net or not, but it should be. The Town of Red Hook's Review Committee, I'm a member of that. There were no meetings held during the month of August. The Red Hook Town, Villages of Red Hook and Tilly Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I are representatives on that. Again, no meetings were held, but there have been some asset inventory taking place at Highway Garage to inventory our tools and equipment. Red Hook Together, both Ed and I sit on that as representatives for the village. No meetings are, we had a very slow month with meetings primarily due to the, but there are some events coming up, the Sculpture Expo. We're supposed to have a event on Saturday, which was rained out. It's being rescheduled and this would include the Dambi Project, which is a dance troupe with Key Bank Green with the sculpture Square 10, the big yellow sculpture there. There are a series of workshops that are being held, um, weekly on Wednesdays from 4:00 to 6:00 on September 23rd and 30th and October 7th and 14th at the new Red Hook Community Center, which is on Fifth Street. Sculpture in Our Community and informal discussion of ideas, praise, gripes, and concerns will be held on Friday, September 25th from 6:00 to 7:00 at Taste Puts. So if you have any concerns about the sculpture, feel free to attend and it says ideas, praise, gripes, and concerns.
Get your cat in the shot, George.
6:00 to 7:30 Taste Puts. Voice of Stone, Finding Art in Nature, an artist lecture by Benny Meigs and Tyler Borcher is scheduled for Thursday, October 15th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Almendorf. Benny Meigs did the, the stone sculptures, one at the corner by the red bottle and the other one in front of Taste Puts. The Red Hook Library will be hosting Hispanic Heritage Celebrations, which is a collaboration between the Red Hook Public Library, La Vaz Magazine, the Village of Red Hook, Red Hook Farmer's Market, and local merchants. And they'll present Grupo Folklorica, traditional Mexican dance troupe at the Red Hook Farmer's Market on Saturday, September 26th. And that's from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And there'll be a salsa judging contest and ugly chips and salsa being provided by Santa Fe Restaurant in Tivoli. The Salt Gill Watershed Forum, both Ed and I are members of that. There are three subcommittees that were formed, one for stewardship, one for research, and one for outreach. And we've been meeting throughout the month of August. The mission is to study, teach about, and protect the history, ecology, and culture of the Salt Gill Watershed. Did I miss anything? Oh, Red Hookin, real quickly, is Photo Expo 2015, the fourth annual jury photo show that will be from September 25th through October 18th and reception on September 26th. And the last one I have is Libraries Transforming Communities, Public Innovators Cohort. I'm a member of that. Coaching Call was held on August 13th with the coaches from the Harwood Institute and the nine other national cohorts. So we're about, we're almost done with this, this grant program, so it's been a lot of So I think that will do it for the Department of Committee Reports. Getting there. And a couple of things left on the regular business agenda.
Brent?
Yes, sir.
Just like to bring one issue up. I just wanted to make reference to Brent said on the, uh, one committee that they had put in 175 hours. I just wanted to make a note that of those 175 hours, Brent put in 121.
A labor of love.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So the first item on the regular business agenda, we will do the budget adjustment. And I'd mentioned in my month's report that we did receive the second leg of our $30,000 grant from the New York State Environmental Cities Corporation for successfully completing our obligation by producing that engineering report and water quality study. And we successfully put in all of our applications and in-kind services. So we did receive a money in form of electronic transfer that was put into the Red Hook Village General Fund account, aligning item 82706C, which is grants from other governments. And we would like to transfer that to the Red Hook Village General Fund Expense Line, number 8110.4, which is Sewer Administration. Since the, the grant was for the sewer project, we'll put it back into the sewer project. At this time, I would entertain a motion to transfer $15,000 from grants from other governments, line 2706C, to the Sewer Administration Expense Line, number 8110.4.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. And one more, two more, two more items. We currently have several vehicles that we would like to designate as surplus. One is the old Highway Department Dump Trailer and the other one is the Police Department Dodge Durango. In order for us to either scrap them or sell them at auction, we're obligated to make a motion and pass the motion to declare them as surplus. The dump trailer will be sold at the Dutchess County Auction on September 21st, 2015. The title has been signed over. The auction documents have been submitted. The trailer has been delivered to the Dutchess County Automobile Center. And the Dodge Durango, the intention there will, will be to have that scrapped. And the Dodge Durango, the intention there will be to have that scrapped, and the proceeds, I really hate to say this, will probably go to the police department as opposed to the highway department.
You want to get your hands on that metal?
I'm trying to. But all lights?
What's the date on the dump trailer?
It's tentative for September 21st. The lights of the Durango, the light equipment and markings are to be removed before scrapping.
We can't put this in the auction.
It's beyond. I think the only customers we would get would be those looking for scrap metal. We may get $150 for it, though we may get a lot more for scrap. So we're further ahead of scrapping it. Sorry, we had to replace the frame and shot. I mean, it's really not redeemable.
Right.
So we want to make sure everything that we could possibly reuse, anything that has the markings on it will be effectively removed and reused if possible. So again, I would entertain a motion to designate the old highway department dump trailer and the police department Dodge Durango as surplus.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll have one more designation to make. As you know, we did agree to purchase a new dump truck for the highway department. Currently, we're still using the old one. The new one's on order. As soon as we get it in, get it commissioned, we'll decommission the old one, try to sell it at auction too. And the last item we have would be the resolution authorizing the submission of the 2016 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Program Application. Do we have a resolution number something down there?
13.
2015, 13?
Mm-hmm.
This, let's see. And so we kept it, I don't want to say generic, but broad enough that it would cover either or or both of the proposed projects that we have. Cindy, you want to do the honors and read the motion, or read the resolution?
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of 2016 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Program Application. Resolution 13-2015. Activity is handicap accessible ADA compliant crosswalk, whereas the Village of Reddick is participating in the Dutchess County Community Development Consortium for fiscal year 2016, and whereas input from citizens and groups has been received and considered, whereas an application has been prepared which addresses our community concerns. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dutchess County Community Development Consortium fiscal year 2016 application for the Village of Reddick, including the certifications, including their end, I and hereby is approved. Be it further resolved that the submission of said applications to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development are hereby is authorized.
And I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, so we'll complete that. This will be part of the application. Since this is due on the 16th, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be on the 19th, so this is, we're moving forward on that.
Trent, I'll try and get you a draft of that by the weekend.
As far as general business goes, we just want to make a few dates known. We'll have a workshop. This is a little out of the ordinary for us. We'll have a workshop on October 15th, which is a Thursday, and because of Columbus Day, we're moving the trustees meeting to October 19th. So our next trustees meeting will be on October 19th.
The workshop date is what? I'm sorry.
15th. And trustees on the 19th.
Are we still having a workshop this Thursday?
And at this time, I'd like to open, thanks Robert, open up the floor for any public comment.
I think initially, Hoffman, do you? I really think the board's taking the wrong position on it. I mean, the way we, the way the article read in the Chronicle, the way their attitude today is, they're doing us a favor by buying our water. The numbers are skewed. In order for them to buy 6 million gallons of water from us, we have to pump, treat, store, and ship 12 million gallons. It's not helping us at all. They should be doing a major buy-in on the project plus paid at the rate that the town gets. Whatever they're buying at the meter, they're getting that. That's not what we're getting.
And like, like was discussed before the meeting, the trustees are in process of discussing their rate schedule, so we're looking at a lot of things right now. And a lot of considerations that we have to address on that.
I think you have to start playing the hard ball with them now. We've dragged the people with it, something.
We are, we are discussing it, and there's, like I said, a lot of issues that we're looking at, so this is a first step, which they brought forward. And we'll continue discussing it.
They should also not do anything until after this quadrant is done, because the water pressures, the demand has come on, get on this particular quadrant, and they're just watering great before it's completed. And they don't get water after we solve the system, who are they going to go after? Well, they shouldn't get nothing till 2017.
Yeah, I don't know what their schedule is. I just, I think they're still in process, but these are all things that we're talking about and discussing, and there will be more information available once we know more. Presenting to you now, an opportunity to further discuss and make comments on it, but I think for the most part, we're all looking at the same issues you are.
We've got a lot of questions.
A lot of questions.
I'm not feeling good about it, watching you talk back and forth. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we've been talking back and forth, and you know, it's coming down to, it's coming down to really some serious talk, so you know, they, we have issues, they have issues, and we're working them out. But it's got to start this board first and go out, so thank you. Anything else, George?
A lighter note.
A lighter note.
I was just thinking, being so artsy over here, I worked in Times Square, wanted to do some body painting, whether permitting a Hardscrabble Day. Invite art.
Right, the art.
The library.
George.
The artists.
You be the model.
I'll be the judge. I spoke to a few people in town, in the village, and they, they just rolled their eyes. I mean, I think, I think they're interested. It'd be kind of interesting. You get your headlines.
This is true.
And just before the show starts, it's daylight.
You made me wait a little.
They'd be part of the parade.
There you go.
Is that it, George?
That's it. Let you go.
George, I'm liking you more and more.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other business from the board? This time, I'd like to make a motion to pay bills after audit. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you would permit, I would love to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'd love to second.
Please do so.
Good night. Thank you.